We're ready to start.[2.12][6.22](Music)
I'd like to call to order the April 15, 2014 meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, and as always, we will start with our Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I will do the invocation, if you'll join me in prayer. God, you're able to change the hearts and minds of all men and women. We'd ask you to use your discretion to soften the hearts and minds of the leaders in Russia, and the USA, and the Ukraine conflict, the Democratic and Republican Party leaders in the stelmate Congress, and others that we don't know specifically but cannot resolve conflict and cannot move forward for the people they represent and lead. Help our country and our world to get along, work together, and move ahead. We're hungry for leadership that does what's right, not just what looks good or is designed to please targeted groups. Thank you for this opportunity, for these men and women, to serve Buncombe County and help our community emerge as a great place to grow up, work, retire, and live. Give these men and women wisdom to make decisions that are just, fair, and reasonable to all of us. Bless the hard-working county managers, directors, staff that help us to carry out the resolutions and ordinances that we pass. We're so fortunate to have such dedicated men and women and help us to lead in a way that's pleasing. Amen. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by this commission, it's the duty of every commissioner to avoid both the potential or actual conflicts of interest. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before us today? If not, we will proceed to public comment. Commissioner Jones is on a well-deserved family vacation. She will not be with us tonight. Time limit on public comment to the commission is three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave any questions, along with your name, address, and phone number, or email with the county manager. Commissioners are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is our time to hear from you and listen to you. Comments should be limited to subjects that are within the jurisdiction of the commission or to pertain to matters upon which we may act. Any individual speaking during public comment should address the entire commission. Any polling of commissioners individually is inappropriate. Persons addressing the commission are expected to observe the decorum of the chamber and be respectful of everyone in the room, whether you agree with them or not. Any person who willfully interrupts, disturbs, disrupts the session will be asked to leave. The board reserves the right to deny public address on any subject that we've previously dealt with. With those rules in mind, is there any public comment tonight? Mr. Yelton, and then the lady in the second row or third row.
Been a good time since I've been up here, and I've got two issues. One issue was, I've been asking some questions of one of the county attorneys, and Wanda Green, about a political sign that I think's political that was put up in this community, thanking only one commissioner for getting some money. And I don't think one commissioner gave that money to the community center. As a matter of fact, none of the commissioners gave that money to the community center. The citizens did. It was their tax dollars. But Chairman Gant, I think you all should have been thanked for that. But the reason you weren't is because it's a time for an election in that area, and it was to highlight that commissioner that brought that forward, and the rest of the commissioners agreed on it. And I also cannot find out that that nonprofit, what kind of nonprofit it is. It's just a nonprofit. It's not a 501(c)(3). And I cannot get an answer as to what is required of a nonprofit that gets county tax dollars in the amount of $32,000 and also charges $150 for a political event to be held there. And they're always busy. So they're making a lot of money, and I'd like to see how that is turned over, especially when they're getting my tax dollars. And I want to thank you, county manager, for your effort in helping answer my questions. I know that was a long, drawn-out process because I had to chase a couple of rabbits. But the thing that really bothers me is what I see on the bottom of the emails coming from the county, and I hope that doesn't turn anybody off and make them not answer my questions because I am very, very persistent. As Wanda knows, we've been through a lot, and I appreciate her, I really do, and I'm saying that publicly, and I hope she knows that, and I think she does. But it says, "Commissioners, do not respond to this email. All county business must be conducted in official board meeting, and at all electronic communications are subject to public record. Inspection in accordance with public record laws. If you have thoughts or comments you would like to share with me or with other commissioners, please do so in person or at the board meeting." Thank you for the comment at the board meeting. But when I read that, that gives me an impression of, what do you think this sounds like, folks? I want you to look at that. Wouldn't it be better to say, "All of our communication is a matter of public record"? Please keep that in mind when you respond. I think that would have a greater meaning, and I think what's on the bottom of that actually makes me have thoughts about the county manager and you folks that I don't like to have. Because in your prayer, David, you said, "We're looking for leadership." And doing things behind closed doors are not making things public when you're doing public business is not leadership. And I'm doing my best to get that out because I know it's a hard job, and I wanted to say it before you hear.[489.18][489.18](Laughter)[490.18][490.18](Laughter)
Thank you, Mr. Yelton. Yes, ma'am. Any other public comment after this? Reverend Landis in the back after her. You're next up. Yes, ma'am. You can come on up, Lisa, if you want to have a seat in front.
My name is Ervin Stevenson. You have a little rat card for me, and I'm the owner of Roundabout Transportation. We have applied for a non-emergency stretcher service, a franchise for the non-emergency stretcher service, at the convalescent ambulance level in Buncombe County, and our application will be coming before you, I believe it's May 13. I've emailed each of you or left a message asking for a bit of your time that I might meet with you personally and tell you about our company and why I believe that our service complements the service of the EMS and rescue squad. Just briefly to tell you that Roundabout was started in 1995, is the original wheelchair-accessible van service in Buncombe County, and we serve, the majority of our clients are in nursing and rehabilitation centers and assisted living, and it is because of their request of us that we have hoped to expand our business for this convalescent level. They say that they need us, they know and trust our service, and the quality of our care and the personalized service that we provide, and we would like to be able to do that. And again, we believe that it complements the EMS and the rescue squad, and I would like to look forward to the opportunity to speak to each of you at your earliest convenience. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Reverend Landis? Any other public comment tonight? Mr. Rice will be next.
I am Reverend Lisa Landis, and I've stood in front of you and have agreed with some of the things and disagreed with many of the things, and when Don was talking, it's like I have to agree with him because, yeah, there are many things that I am questioning in the how you conduct business, and I'm going to be exposing the things that I'm questioning. I'm very vocal on public access. The public needs access to a forum in which to speak with our community. There are so many laws and ordinances that are put in place that restrict us communicating with each other. And, you know, one of the reasons that URTV had shut down was because of the financing, and I found it quite interesting that in November of 2011 that there was a new employee added to the BCTV budget for almost $44,000 a year. And, you know, I'm really wondering about the $136,890 that it takes to operate BCTV because it wasn't near as big as what we had over at URTV, although you guys do have a whole lot more equipment and all that kind of good stuff. But being a reverend, you know, a lot of people don't quite understand because they're still on the Bible, and the Bible revelation, you know, does come to an end. And understanding that in 2012, there was a shift. There was a shift from the male-dominated society, and it's interesting that you had opened up with a softening of the heart because we are coming into a feminine divine. We are coming into a more of a woman-oriented world today, and that does mean that there is more love and kindness that's going to go around, and we're going to find out that we need that. And we have to stop doing the us and them. Every time I come here, it's like, you know, you and us, and there's a definite divide in the public that is coming from the government, and that can't be, that there cannot be a division. You know, the divide and conquer is only good if you want to conquer the people that you're ruling. And it's like, is that what the whole thing's about, that you are ruling the people and therefore what you say goes? And that shouldn't be because the government is supposed to be of the people, for the people, and by the people. So I'm really happy that the feminine divine is going to be coming in and taking over because we need it. We need it badly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Landis. Mr. Rice? Any other members of the public wish to be heard tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Oh, you know, I'm amazed every time I look at you. Of course, I mean, you can be amazed at me, too. I'm amazed at the fact that when the county commission meets, and I've watched this for years and years, 21 to be exact, they wrangle, they twist, they jump, they holler, they scramble. The media whooped them all over for a trip to Hawaii. $20,000. Good Lord, they whooped them all over. $10,000, $5,000, $4,000, they whooped them all over. And on the consent agenda, millions is being slipped out the back door, and nobody's saying a word. The media ain't even doing it. You have to slip them a note to get them to pay attention, and then they won't even pay attention. Fact Place is a good example. As for Citizen does stories, but they throw it to the side. News Media 13 does the same thing. Have you guys ever had that problem? Well, I'm getting down to transparency, you know? Transparency. The new board members that we've got, seven, I want to say something to y'all. There's more been done behind the scenes than there's ever been with a board of commissioners that's ever set up here, and I'm ashamed to say it. I think there needs to be more discussion on each of these items here in the room, not in the back room. Don't be doing your little tricks back there. And sure enough, there's plenty of them going on. The CRA board met the other day, and what intrigued me about that on transparency, the polling of the board? Here's a sheet for each one of the committee members to fill out and put their name on, and it was called a straw poll. You commissioners are going to get the straw poll vote. They even canceled the last meeting on the 22nd, on the special meeting, put it to the 30th of May. What's going to happen? They've already made their decision. That's what's happened. The $16 million for the aquatic center and recreation center, you watch it. It's going to come before you, but it's already decided. It's been decided. We got new board members on the CRA? We got new board members. What about that? And a big, old committee, and the legislators even weighed in. What do we say about that? Same plan, new heads, new bodies, but the same plan. Same money, same place it's going to be, aquatic center, recreation center, same thing. It's going to be right where it's been planned all these years. Transparency, what about that?
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Any other public comment tonight? If not, I was, our alert clerk advised me that we do have, under consent agenda, the Brewer-Farmer Resolution. I would still like to pull that up so that we can let people know what we're doing there. All right, thank you. Is there, so can I take that as a motion, as the amended agenda, to approve it as it is, except for pulling up the FDA regulation? There's been a motion by Commissioner Fryer, a second by Vice Chair Frost, to follow the consent, because follow the whole agenda as we've published it, with the exception of pulling up the FDA reg resolution.
There's one more, though, David. Since we're doing it, let's just, the bus stop deal, let's just bring it up. We know it's going to go through, but I know where it's going now, but at least the people will know what's happening there.
Okay, all right. Then we'll pull up the ordinance on the Swan and Old Bus Shelter. All right. We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion of that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then the motion is to follow the agenda as amended by a six to zero vote. We will be taking comments at some point on that. Okay, proclamations. We have a certificate of commendation to Alyssa Airwood. Is she here? Ms. Airwood, if you'd come up, and I think Vice Chair Frost is going to congratulate you on your national championship. Yeah, we've just got to approach that podium.
I think this is a wonderful event and a hero in Buncombe County, and for all the kids who are involved in sports and the tireless hours that they spend practicing and practicing and practicing, whether they're five or they're 18, they can look at a list and think dreams really do come true with hard work. So thank you on the face of Buncombe County. This says, "Buncombe County Commissioners recognize and honor Alyssa Airwood. The board has hereby recognized and honored with great pride your accomplishments, including your national title as part of the YMCA Pyramid Swim Club. We commend your dedication and hard work that make your success possible. You have brought honor to your county, and with you, we wish you continued success in your athletic and academic career. Buncombe County Board of Commissioners."
Ms. Airwood, if you want to come up, and if either one of y'all want to say anything, we would love to hear what it was like. If you'd like, that's up to y'all.[1175.82][1175.82](Laughter) It's enough to win it. You won't overdo it, but we are mighty proud of you. Let's give this young lady a hand.[1182.65][1182.65](Applause)
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight, both of you. It's an honor to have you here. Next up, we have Community Child Protection Team update. We have Angie Pittman, and then she will introduce the... Okay, I'll get that in a minute. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I wanted to thank the chairman, commissioners, and county manager for a chance to continue to spotlight child abuse and neglect prevention for this month of April. We're building off of the last commissioners' meeting where Mr. McGuire came and talked and received the proclamation. And so what we want to do tonight is highlight some Health and Human Services-led efforts around prevention, as well as community efforts we have going on around that. As you all well know, because you've heard it many times, and actually, you're the folks that pushed it forward, you know that we have legally mandated responsibilities in child protection in our community. And so we take that very seriously, and we're very proud of the fully qualified social work staff we have who go out and do those interventions when they're statutorily necessary. But what I want to highlight tonight is we also have very qualified prevention staff who are working with families so that they never enter our Child Protective Services system, and that's what we all want. Because all of us, I think, would agree, we only want government to intervene when it's absolutely necessary. And so these preventative strategies really do help us be able to prevent some of that from happening. Not only is child abuse and neglect our mandated responsibility, it's also a public health issue. And you've heard the Health Director here many times, as well as the Health and Human Services Director, speak about that. So tonight, as we're talking about the different efforts we have happening and the community efforts we have happening, I think that you'll see that we're trying to build, with our community partners, a really strong and resilient approach to help families and children be safe in our community. And one of the things I can't stress enough is that resiliency is key here. If we build a resilient community, and it will be a community where kids are safe and where families are self-sufficient, healthy, and thriving. So Judy, I'm ready for the PowerPoint. I'm not going to bore you with a lot of data, but I need to give you three snapshots of data, just for context. So the first piece of that, you'll see over a period of years where we are in terms of reports that are accepted. These are reports that actually do come into the Child Protective Services system, so you can see the volume here over time. And you'll see that last year was one of the highest years we'd had in some time, and we're running very close to that for this fiscal year. To break that down just a little bit further, I wanted to make the point on this slide because some of our prevention strategies are targeted toward those very young children, and the reason for that is the research, as well as our own data, is really clear that that is the group that we receive the most reports on in our system. It's the most vulnerable group as well because what the research also tells us is that those are the children that are most likely to have very serious injuries or to die from child abuse and neglect. This third snapshot of data shows you for fiscal year 13, where all of the accepted Child Protective Services reports were in the county. So you can see it as a whole, you can see your district, and what you'll note is that, and this really validates that this impacts all of us, is it's in every community. So it's something that all of us have an investment in preventing. I'm going to talk very briefly tonight about some of these efforts that we have going on. Many of you have already heard about our community service navigators, or have maybe accessed those for your constituents, and those folks truly are our first line of prevention in this community. They are folks who live in communities, who the people there already trust and know, and they are connecting them with Health and Human Services, as well as other services, so that they never enter our system. We've had a lot of successes with this. One I have to highlight just really quickly, Rashida McDaniels in Kenan Lake, who have worked tirelessly around this effort, had a group of children in Pisgah View that wanted to access Carrier Park. Well, Amboy Road is very busy, as we know, and there wasn't a crosswalk there. They presented to our Health and Human Services Board. Commissioner King was there for that, and Ken Putnam, who works with the city, heard that presentation. He worked very quickly with us and with North Carolina DOT to get a crosswalk installed. So Girls on the Run was able to come in there, and now those kids have a safe walkway to the park, and that helps address health needs. So we're very excited about that. One small, small, little example. We currently have community service navigators located in many locations in the county, and in fiscal year 15, we'll have them in all ends of the county, and so I'm sure you'll be hearing more about that as we go forward. The other effort that's connected to community service navigators that we're already working on and implementing pieces of and planning for for next year is to work more deeply with communities to address issues around poverty. And that's an effort with ABCCM, the Housing Authority, the faith community, as well as community action opportunities, to really focus and target with families who need jobs to sustain their families. And they've had lots of success. ABCCM has been doing this program in other areas and have had lots of success with that. Want to talk just a bit about prevention and chronic neglect. Within Health and Human Services, we have our group of social workers who do these preventative efforts. I'm going to focus on two things. One is the prevention and chronic neglect, and the second is under-six, which I'll talk about in a moment. So in my intro, I talked about many families need help in getting resources so they never enter our system. These prevention social workers help them do that. The families come to our attention through our intake line, but they don't meet the definition of abuse or neglect. But what we want to do with these families is potentially offer them this service so they never enter our system to begin with. What's very exciting is, once our prevention social workers have connected the families with what they need, they can also then, even if their case is closed, connect the families with community service navigators or other community partners who can continue to be an ongoing support for that family, and a much more natural support than we can be. We're pretty excited about some of this data. You see the numbers of families, this is from fiscal year 13, that we engaged with, and so far to date, 83% of those families have not entered the system. This group of social workers also addresses chronic neglect, which is directly related to health outcomes, educational outcomes, and truly down the road is related to keeping people out of jail and hopefully decreasing mental health and emergency room visits. And so we know, and I won't read this slide to you, we know how chronic neglect, and chronic neglect is a situation where parents cannot meet the kids' needs in an ongoing way, and it can result in developmental delays, it can result in educational issues, and so if these social workers can get in there and work with the school and the families, many times we're able to help move them to a better place so that they have more positive outcomes. Want to say one more thing about chronic neglect. You all know that we have a very strong partnership with Buncombe County Schools, as well as Asheville City Schools, and in those schools, we have nurse social worker teams. So the school nurses that you all fund and school social workers work in a team to help kids that are identified in the educational system as having issues and who may enter our system. They do some preventative efforts there. They also work very closely with folks in health around accessing whatever those kids need or connecting them to a primary medical home. The under-six program, I talked a little bit about the vulnerability of children who are under six, and this is a program we developed based on a national model that was evidence-informed. And this is, for those reports that are screened out, that don't meet the definition of abuse or neglect, we reach out to those families and try to at least connect them with something, lay eyes on the child, connect with the parent, try to give them information about child development issues, and so on. And so over half, this is a voluntary service, all these services I'm talking about tonight are voluntary, and so over half of the folks, families that we've approached have worked with us, and of those, 78% have not entered the Child Protective Services system. And we feel like that's very strong. We will continue to collect additional data as we go forward with this. One of the things that I think is really important, and we only have this cost avoidance data for... data for one quarter, because we're very solid on that data is completed and we have every bit of it. For one investigation that enters the Child Protective Services world, which was that first chart you saw, the cost is around $5,600. So in the first quarter alone with under six, we were, we were able to avoid $42,000 worth of costs from that Child Protective Services system, as well as an unwanted intervention for that family. You have heard our health director, Gibby Harris, talk about Nurse Family Partnership quite a bit, and you know that it's an evidence-based, very long-time-studied approach, but it is really critical to the child abuse prevention strategies that we have. What we know from the data is that there's 48% decrease in child maltreatment, and a very significant decrease in kids showing up in the ER with injuries. For our own county, out of 209 births, so out of 209 kids or families that have been worked with, with Nurse Family Partnership, only eight of those had a finding, and that's about 3.5%. And that's, that's, I think, a testimony to how strong that model is. So Jennifer Nielsen, who is the Guardian Ed Lightem Administrator, and also our Community Child Protection Team Chair, is going to talk about Triple P and a couple of other things.
Good evening. So I'm Jennifer Nielsen, I'm District Administrator for the Guardian Ed Lightem Program, which is a state program through the Administrative Office of the Courts. You have 175 community members who currently serve as volunteers in our program, and they advocate for the best interest of abused and neglected children in your community. What I'm here to talk about, though, is Triple P, which is Positive Parenting Program. This is a program that's been in the works for about 30 years. It's an evidence-based program that came out of Australia and has been adopted by Buncombe County. It is a coordinated system of multi-level programs, and it, they're increasing intensity. So the first level is messages about positive parenting, on through programs that target specific instances, maybe your toddler is tantruming and you're not sure how to handle that, up through the highest level, which is, you know, parents who have an issue that don't allow them to parent their child positively. And those are one-on-one or small-group settings. But this is a program that is aimed at our entire community. Buncombe County has chosen to focus on the developmental periods of infancy through adolescence, but the materials can actually be applied up through age 13. It's a public health model, which is a different way to think about a parenting education program. Parenting education can sometimes be perceived as punitive, like you're not a good parent, so therefore you have to take a parenting class. Triple P is telling everybody, parenting is a hard job, and we all could use help with it. I'm the mother of a biological daughter, an adoptive daughter and a foster daughter. It's tough. I could use some help some days. Triple P recognizes that there's a cross-section of parents across our community. The aim with Triple P, though, is to promote healthy child development, prevent children's social, emotional and behavioral problems, prevent child maltreatment, and strengthen parenting at the entire population level, not just those that we deem to be at risk. We also want to destigmatize seeking information and support. It's okay as a parent to say, "I'm not sure how to handle this, where can I go to find extra help?" Okay? I'm the current Chair of the Community Child Protection Team. We fully support Triple P's implementation in Buncombe County, because of that positive message that it promotes, everyone needs help at some point, and that we think as a community will benefit when all parents feel supported in their role, and that children, therefore, feel the benefits of having positive parenting in their lives. So there are providers in Buncombe County, there's a number of different agencies, the county, private agencies, the schools, so that parents can access Triple P at a number of different levels. And then I mentioned that I'm with the Child Protection Team. The Child Protection Team in Buncombe County was formed in 1991 after state legislation was enacted, stating that there needed to be a local response for communities to help strengthen child protection. It's an interdisciplinary citizen review panel. It involves law enforcement, District Attorney's Office, mental health agencies, pediatricians, the medical examiner, schools, Department of Health and Human Services and Guardian Ed Lightem. We meet monthly to address system issues related to child abuse and neglect. We review all deaths, both intentional and unintentional, to identify gaps or barriers in services that could prevent future fatalities. We also do case reviews, so social workers that have really difficult cases can come before this group and get some additional ideas and insight. And so sometimes, you know, a social worker gets stuck in a certain mind frame, and going to this group might open that up and bring in new ideas that could benefit the family. We work to increase public awareness around conditions that impact child protection, and we advocate for system changes when identified. We do inform the Health and Human Services Director about actions that are needed to prevent or ameliorate child abuse, neglect or dependency. For example, in 2013, we reviewed five complicated cases that were prevented, or presented by social workers. One was an abuse case, three were neglect, and one was a combination of abuse and neglect. The significant Child Protective Services factors that we identified in those five cases were the lack of safe, stable housing, limited family support, and lack of services available to inmates in prisons across the state. Because there are parents in prison who will try to parent when they get out of prison, and that was a significant factor in one of the cases we reviewed. Child Protection Team was proud to sponsor the purchase of under-six T-shirts for distribution at the Healthy Kids Event that was held this past Saturday. That's a YMCA event, and it was held at Pack Place. The Child Protection Team members manned the booth all day to give out the shirts and provide positive parenting materials to our target, target audience of families with young children. And there's a picture of two of our Child Protection Team members, Lisa Morrison with the DA's office, and Dawn Warren with Health and Human Services at the event. I brought my 11-year-old daughter, it was wonderful. There were a lot of families out there who were really receptive to a positive message that parenting is hard. So thank you so much, and I believe Lisa Eby is up.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Lisa Eby for...
I just wanted to, you have in front of you a pile of communication materials that have been developed, and I wanted to go through and just highlight a few of those for you. We, we thought carefully and looked at the research and, and decided that for Child Abuse Prevention Month, that we wanted to just focus on four areas that we know make a huge difference in preserving the health and the well-being of children. And that is that you need to choose your caregiver carefully, and then think again. The research shows that 85% of the morbidity or serious injury or child fatalities that happen within a family are at the hands of a non-biological caregiver. So that is a mother's boyfriend, or potentially a, most often it is a male, but it could also be a male who was caring for his children and his girlfriend, but it is a non-biological caregiver. And so we want, this is just a very important statistics, 85%, so we want parents and caregivers in this community to understand that choosing your caregiver is a very important thing. And so what you have in front of you is a rack card that we gave out at that event, but we're also making available to all the community partners that Angie just talked about, so that they can use these to educate the community, to elevate the conversation in the community. Because we also know that it's very important when you're a single mom, and you're scrambling to get to work, and all of a sudden you don't have someone to watch your kids, then it may be very tempting to make a decision that's not the best decision for your child. So it's a larger question for our community as well. And again, when Angie mentioned some of the work that's happening through ABCCM and helping to move parents out of poverty, there are supports in place in these programs as well to help caregivers make good decisions. The other area that we're focusing on is to never, ever shake a baby. And as you all know, it, it happens in our community, it happens in communities across the United States, that shaking a baby can result in severe injury or child fatality. And again, we have pictures that we hope will, people can see themselves in, and then read the information on the back to make sure that they know what, what they can do if they're in a tough situation. On all of these rack cards that you have in front of you, we're having that logo about "Good Parents Are Made, Not Born," which hearkens back to Triple P. And then we refer them to our resource line, so we can connect them with services if they are struggling, where we can use what's available in the community to kind of give them a leg up. The last two are Ask for Help, Good Parents Are Made, Not Born, which is the one I just talked about, and then finally Preventing SIDS, just practicing safe sleep. Last year, we had some fatalities in our community just based on this, and it's just another one of those very simple things, that if we can educate caregivers about, we can prevent death in our community. The last thing I want to talk about is we have, as you saw, those T-shirts that were in the other, that were shown, and then we, we had these little child T-shirts that they gave out that were oh-so cute. But you know, children are great advertisement, and so again, this, this helps the community to understand, the under-six program is to keep an eye on kids under six, to really make sure that we're speaking up for those kids, that we're protecting them, that we're supporting them, because they can't speak up for themselves. So this is great advertisement. And then another thing we did is we created these coloring sheets, so kids put their hand on here, they get involved in it, they color it, they decorate it, and then we had magnets, and then this goes up on the board, and you'll see we have these "us" tips at the bottom, and said, "Nobody's perfect, don't take it personally when a child does something that hurts your feelings." Because again, the research shows that oftentimes for children under six, caregivers have an unrealistic expectation of behavior for those kids. So these coloring pages, again, have tips that help to remind parents about what's appropriate for their age. So we're using communication materials in a variety of ways, very fortunate to have a group of very talented people that help us. Kathy's always very supportive of the work that we do. And trying to push this out, so that we're elevating the conversation in our community, and educating people about very simple, but objective things they can do that will help improve the safety and well-being of children in the community. So that's all I have, unless you have other questions, or questions for Angie or Jennifer.
Any questions for these ladies? Great programs. Thank you, Ms. Pittman, Ms. Nelson, Ms. Eby.
I have...
Yes, sir.
Don't have a question, but the one thing I do have is thanks to Mandy, Angie, Lisa. We stepped up a week or so ago and thanked people for, you know, outside sources for the work that they've done in this. I want to thank y'all for the work that y'all do, and your group. Mandy, what a team you have. Without you, the numbers we was looking at there would not be close. Thank you. And that's all I have to say, is I appreciate everything that y'all do.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. The folks that are really important are right back there in that corner, they're going to kill me for pointing them out, but they lead this work every single day in this community. And it absolutely could not be done without them, without our supervisors and our amazing staff. So thank you for that on behalf of them.
And I did have an opportunity to go meet with a lot of them at a luncheon, and I understand these ladies in the back of the room, it's, it's a lot of work. You know, you're the ones out at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning when a child is, something's happened, and it's not a, it's not an eight-hour job for you, so thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for reminding us. All right, next up, we have Commissioner King is going to give Lynn Mahdiabas a National Correction Officers and Employees Week proclamation. If you'll come on up, Lynn. Thank you for being here.
This is National Correctional Officers and Employees Week. Whereas National Correctional Officers and Employees Week was first proclaimed on May the 5th, 1984, by President Ronald Reagan, when he signed Proclamation 5187, creating National Correctional Officers Week, to recognize the men and women who work in jails, prisons and community corrections across the country. And whereas National Correctional Officers and Employees Week became the official name of the week in May, when in 1986, the United States Senate officially changed the name from National Correctional Officers Week. And whereas National Correctional Officers and Employees Week has been designated as the week of May 4th, 2014, through May 10th, 2014, by the United States Department of Justice and the Federal Bureau of Prisons. And whereas National Correctional Officers and Employees Week honors the work of correctional officers and correctional personnel for their service with honor, respect and integrity. And whereas National Correctional Officers and Employees Week raises the awareness of the duties, hazards and sacrifices made by the correctional workers. And whereas National Correctional Officers and Employees Week in Buncombe County recognizes employees of the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office Detention Bureau, and the role in safeguarding the citizens of Buncombe County by providing safe, secure, humane incarceration of offenders within their custody. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of Buncombe County of, as follows, the week of May 4th through the 10th, 2014, be proclaimed National Correctional Officers and Employees Week in Buncombe County, that all Buncombe County citizens be encouraged to pay tribute to the correctional workers in Buncombe County's Sheriff's Office Detention Bureau, and the vital public service they provide. That this proclamation be effective upon its adoption, adopted this 15th day of April 2014, Board of Commissioners of the County of Buncombe, by Chairman David Yant and the Board.
I just wanted to recognize a couple of people. First of all, Sheriff Duncan, certainly for his leadership with the detention facility and the detention bureau. But also specifically Lieutenant Gould, who's our operation lieutenant that brought this proclamation together, wanted to go ahead and recognize those folks, but also the other 200 folks that work at the detention bureau, much as the officers that you have here every day that do the job. It's a tough job, and we appreciate them very much, and that goes out to every one of them. So we thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. All right, next, we're going to go into new business and discuss an act abolishing the current fire districts and fire service districts, creating and consolidating fire protection service districts, and permitting emergency medical rescue and ambulance service in such service districts. We have Mr. Frue, Mike Frue is going to be here to talk about the legislation. We also have Skyland Fire Chief Dennis Presley here for more information if there are questions. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is sort of an issue that's 50 or 60 years in the making, and Dennis Presley can explain, you know, essentially what happened. From my view, we have, Judy, if you could go ahead and show that first slide of the tax districts. We have 35 service areas in the county, 33 tax districts in the county. And I'm talking specifically about fire protection districts and county service districts, which are declared to be fire districts within the county. We have about 20 or 21 fire departments. So what, what we have here is a number of layers of different taxing districts, and different, very cumbersome ways to change those districts, in terms of changing their boundaries, changing the rates. The main problem we have now is that we have several of the fire districts in the county, Barnardsville, the smaller ones, Barnard's, Broad River, et cetera, that are hitting up on their 15-cent rate cap. So if they're sitting right at that rate cap, there's, there's no way that they can go beyond that cap. So they're, they're struggling to make sure they can keep ends meet, ends to meet currently with the 15-cent cap. We have approximately 18 service districts currently, and they have a totally different taxing structure for their level. A backup, when, when the legislation passed in the, in the late 50s to allow rural fire protection districts, some of them started with 10 cents, then they had special elections to change that rate to 15 cents. In 1960, I looked it up on Google, if you look at 10 cents, then that would be worth about 70 cents today. So everyone knows how vital... So everyone knows how vitally important and also how expensive fire protection services are, but they need some extra room, and we need extra ability to be able to change those districts when needed. If you can go to the next slide, Judy, please. What we propose is to, and the reason we're asking for your support, to ask the local delegation in Raleigh to pass a local act to change, to wipe out essentially the fire service districts and the fire protection districts, and start from scratch with 21 new service districts, starting July 1st. And what we'll do now, I'll ask Dennis to stand up and explain, I have slides for everything. Judy, if you can go ahead and make the switch to the Skyland District. If the board requests, we can go through the mall and just explain how it is. But what we did essentially was working with the chiefs, and Jerry Vehan wasn't able to be here today, but we've clumped the same tax rates into new service districts, so there won't be any shock value in terms of changing of rates. For instance, Skyland's all 9.1. If we put those three districts into one service district, the rate won't change. That, of course, depends on the commission's pleasure during the budget cycle, but we anticipate each to stay essentially where they are. And that, this is the Skyland Fire Service District as proposed.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, what's your, what is presented to you today, if your support is there for us, is another tool in our box for another fine protection for this county and the fire districts. On behalf of all the fire chiefs in this county, we support this 100%. Mike and Jerry Vehan is, and one has done a tremendous amount of work on this. All the fire chiefs have seen these maps, and it allows us to cut out what we used to call no man's land and cut out all these district names, and David, it cuts out the district that you live in and officially puts us in the Skyland District. It's just more help to get this. In our chief's minds, we don't have district lines anymore. In our mental mind, we don't care about lines. And by the way, in 1960, I was just born, so I wanted to get that across there. But we don't have those lines, but we realize why, that there's a need for a district line for tax purposes. So this group meets on a regular basis, once a month, and we discuss things like this. And this is 100% about the people in this county having protection that we don't have to argue over, we don't have to ask who's going because we're all going if we need to go. Again, another tool that we are proud to present, a fire service district that will provide for many years to come, and it puts it into one name of each district.
All right. Any questions for Chief or Mr. Frue?
Yeah, I've got one. When, okay, so when these fire districts are absorbed into other fire districts, will they, in effect, some of these smaller ones, will they, in effect, be getting a break?
There, as far as fire districts, there will nothing change from today and when it goes into effect. You will not see a difference in the lines. They were already there, they just had the lines in, within the lines of a fire district. So I guess your question is a tax break. They will retain the same tax rate that the department asked for, I guess, next week's budget.
Okay, so help me understand, you're going from 33 to 20, to 21?
That's correct.
Right?
21, that's correct.
So some are growing, right? But as it grows...
As it grows...
As it grows, those people that are absorbed are going to pay the same rate they've paid.
Well, I think part of the issue is, as Chief Presley explained, is the fire departments have been greatly cooperative with each other forever, and they just haven't really allowed the horrible bureaucracy of these laws, which require votes and public hearings and mailings to everybody every time any line is changed. They provide service regardless of the lines, but what the, for instance, the, if you recall the Skyland District, it has two fire districts and one service district, but Skyland responds and has responded for several years to all three of those districts. So they all have the same tax rate.
Okay.
What we need to do is start from scratch so that proceeding forward from the time that hopefully we get this local legislation from July 1st forward, if we need to make a change, then we can just use the fire service statutes and just do it properly. Today, there's a lot of handshakes and a lot of unofficial lines. We just need to start it all from scratch and just from square one and move forward smoothly. Okay, thank you.
I know there was some angst with folks that lived in Treehaven and Black Mountain, so this will correct, or no?
You know that? Garen Creek and Broad River?
Broad River, yes.
Well, I think both Garen Creek and Broad River...
I think there was some confusion, and I think the homeowners had some questions a while back, but it seems like this would fix it.
Garen Creek, for instance, won't change at all. They're already a service district. I don't know what year they were formed, but they were formed under the general statutes allowing for service districts, and that boundary won't change. I think Broad River, their fire district, and they're not going to change in size, but they would just change from a fire district to a service district. So I think the Skyland example's the best one because it's combining three into one, but some of them don't change in size or scope, they're just changing to a different entity. And then the county would still be required to make new contracts with the new entities to provide the same service with the same chiefs and same departments for the same areas.
Can I ask Dennis a question? Just talking, it's moving David into basically your district. Now, the Fairview's supposedly going to build a substation out toward there, plus you already have a substation that's going to be within a couple of miles of that. Does that mean that the substation at Fairview's not going to build it, or is that still in the books?
I think that they're still planning and doing that. I'm not sure where they're at with that, because like everybody else with the economy, it put plans on hold for several years. But I think the land is still purchased. I haven't spoken with Scott.
The land's been purchased for about four years.
Yeah.
So, but that, I was just thinking, when you was talking about taking David's part in, that's really right at David's section, and why do we need to, you know, that way we can have a savings, because you already have one, a substation there. If you can add on to it with one truck, then we're covered big time.
And I think you're going to hear more about that in days to come from our fire chiefs.
Thank you.
I think we're going to set it to table, and we're going to talk about things like that in the very near future. Jerry's told me that it's time for that, and I think you're going to hear about that.
Thanks very much.
One thing I want to add is that this morning, I met with our district representative from the Department of Insurance, and he says what we're doing here is a little different from the rest of the state, but this is what departments need so departments can lower their homeowner's insurance for this entire county. And that means a lot when a homeowner gets their insurance bill and you're down to a 6, 5, 4, whatever it may be, that's when people really notice that the fire service is going to work for them.
Any other questions, Mr. Frue or Chief Presley? Is there a motion to adopt, I guess this is a resolution to request the General Assembly to make the necessary changes in state law, is that right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and we would forward this proposed draft to the local delegation.
Okay. Is there a motion to make the proposal to General Assembly as set out in our agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Frost. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner King. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then the request passes six to zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your service. Next, we will go ahead and take up this Swananoa bus shelter. That is a budget amendment in our consent agenda. Is there any questions? This is a, I think, a $10,000, let's see. Yeah, can John, can you tell us what this is? And I think we have, I'll go ahead and take public comment on this, I guess.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Board members. I had a request from Commissioner Frost to look at the possibility of locating a bus shelter in the Swananoa area, basically over from Ingalls. And I think, as everybody knows, the city of Asheville runs a transit route from Asheville to Black Mountain, which we feed in through Mountain Mobility to their service there. I checked with, first with DOT, Division Engineer Jay Swain, and he told me that as long as it's in their right-of-way, that they would give us an encroachment, but that the bill, but the shelter itself had to be built to their specs. Basically, it had to be engineered, designed to withstand certain winds, and also that if it was struck, that it, excuse me, that it would break apart, you know, in a safe manner. So, you know, I kind of went into this thing thinking, well, you know, we could get our physical facilities or general services people to construct a bus shelter, but that's really not possible these days. So I contacted Ken Putnam, who's with the city of Asheville. He told me that they've gone to a basic design, that they order the shelter from a manufacturer, it comes, they pour the pad, and then they can construct the shelter in about a half a day. So I checked on the price of it, and that's where I came up with the $10,000 to make sure that we get the pad, it get engineered, and we get the proper shelter that the city of Asheville basically uses.
Okay, sir. Any questions, Mr. Creighton?
Yeah, I brought this forward, just another question, but I brought it forward because in the consent agenda, it just says money and planning, and the planning is gone, but from what I did talk to the city of Asheville, too, and the shed is about $8,000, and they have a company that puts the pads and stuff in legally because there has to be a certain way it's put in for handicapped people. So that's the, by going to the city is exactly the way to do it, so I'm 100% behind it. So that brings that forward.
And that's also built a company in Hendersonville? Is that my understanding, is this close? I mean, I think I heard that.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't ask that question. I'm not sure where the shelter comes from.
That's what I heard.
The Henderson County, the first big construction in this county.
The contractors that do it are from Henderson County for the city.
All right.
But they know what they're doing, and it's, we're not planning for it, we're just going to have it done.
No, this is, yeah, this is the building.
This is the edge of where the Swananoa Shuttle comes back and forth to town?
It's, it goes out 70, so...
Warehouse, innit?
Yeah, it's down by the Ingalls Grocery Store there is where it is.
The bus goes all the way to Black Mountain.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. Okay, good. Are any other questions? Okay, I'll take public comment. Any members of the public wish to be heard? Sophie?
I really just want to say thanks. I've been working on this, and my organization, Friends and Neighbors of Swananoa, has been working on this for a few years at this point, so we've been working to raise the money, we've been trying to get donations of supplies, we have been trying to work with the city of Asheville, DOT, et cetera, so I am so relieved to be able to report that this is actually going to happen. We have done, in the past, several surveys. We had a young lady that was an intern with us that was working on her gold award for Girl Scouts, and this was her, this was her award and research. And when we surveyed the riders in our Swananoa Valley, we realized, and I didn't realize because I'd just come on board, that of the nine stops that we have in Swananoa, we have no bus shelters, and none of them are really ADA compliant either. They are just a sign on the side of the road, and so we have been working with various entities to try to get this to fruition, and so I just really want to say thank you so much. I wish I could squeeze two shelters out of that $10,000. But I will, I will be doing what I can to try to get more shelters along the way, because what we also realized from surveying our ridership is that there is, there are a lot of people in our area that use the bus for their livelihood, for employment, to get to their jobs, they are scheduling their lives around the bus. And one thing I would like to say is, in addition to actually putting the shelter up, we really, really need work to work with the DOT and whoever else, I guess, is planning to create safe pathways to get to the bus stops, because that is really what we are lacking. And if you speak to a lot of people that ride the bus, you will quickly realize we have no crosswalks, we have very dangerous zones, there's one spot, long old 70, that is a very beaten path, I would say, but it is a danger zone, and that is one of the main ways that people are getting to the bus stop. And so if, maybe, maybe we could start working on that next. That would be great, but just a general thank you very much to the county for making this happen. I'm really excited. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Yelton, any other public comment after Mr. Yelton? Mr. Rice?
I don't think anybody's against providing bus service to people that don't have a car and can't get to work, but one thing I would like to see is the taxpayer that's paying for all of this is the number of riders per area, because if you want more in Swananoa, that's how to get more, get more riders, because in Weaverville, as it pulls through by Ingalls and the mall, I see one or two people riding it. And I think that's getting to be very expensive. And as gas continues to rise in price, and nobody's gripped about that, can you believe that? Nobody said nothing about it. It's up to $2.59 a gallon, folks. So as that gets up, these will be more economical, but to prove they're economical, you're going to have to know the ridership. And if a community wants one, they might ought to fund it themselves to get the stop, but they have to get the ridership built up, make people work for it. But show me, as the person that's funding it, how it is being used. That's the one thing I would suggest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Yelton. Mr. Rice? If we have the numbers, let's just attach that to your comments, then, if you could give that to our...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Board member. What comes into mind for me is I've seen these shelters, and I'm just a common sense person, let me tell you. Have you ever seen one? They're the most unsafe-looking piece of equipment I've ever seen in my life. You've got the road, you've got the sidewalk attached to the road, and you've got that attached to the sidewalk. I don't see any bars setting out in front of Ingalls, you know what I'm saying? Them big old posts they set out there to keep you from running over? I think they need to be a good look at the safety of these things all over the county, wherever they're at and whoever's putting them in, because I don't think it prevents any car from ever running through them. I think there ought to be a distance setback, a setback on them, to where they ain't up on the sidewalk. I mean, the bus can see where the bus stop is, and they have time to walk to the bus safely and be out of a safety problem. The other thing is the ADA is especially prudent to use in here, of course. The other thing is, if you look at them, they're wide open like this, and they've got a little hood over them. It don't prevent anything from weather, I mean, I've seen down here, a good example, if you go down here to Goodwill and look at that one, sometimes you'll see 10, 15 people or more, because that's a work area for people riding the bus and going to Goodwill. But if you look at it, they're staggering out into the road, and I ain't saying they're drunk, I don't know what's wrong with them, but they'll stagger out, and they're playing, they're pulling at one another, and that goes to another safety issue regarding that. But I think there need to be a comprehensive plan to look at all the city and the county if you're looking at it together. There ought to be a comprehensive plan to look at this thing for safety as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Any other public comment? If not, I'll call the question. Is there a motion to adopt the amendment?
So, Mr.
A motion by Commissioner Newman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Frost. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The amendment passes by a six to zero vote. Thank you. If we could just get that attached, if you don't mind. Next, we added the resolution in opposition to new FDA regs for farmers. I asked this to come up, so let me just read it. Whereas the growing craft beer business in Buncombe County is a perfect example of the opportunity to connect struggling livestock producers to a low-cost feed source available from new and developing breweries in the area, and whereas this feeding process... from new and developing breweries in the area, and whereas this feeding process has been a proven practice for many years in other parts of North Carolina and provides a much-needed increase in farm income by lowering the cost of cattle production, this additional income source encourages our local farmers to keep family farms working rather than sell for real estate development, and whereas this board gives unwavering support for reasonable regulation that strengthens the safety of our food supply for humans and animals. However, this board is concerned with the proposed regulation of spent brewers and distillers' grains under the Food and Drug Administration proposed rule, current good manufacturing practice and hazard analysis and risk-based preventive controls for food for animals, and whereas by establishing a broad definition of animal food, FDA extends this regulation to encompass finished product, raw materials, and ingredients such as spent brewers' grains. Spent grains are widely used for animal food across this country, and the brewing industry has cultivated mutually beneficial relationships with farmers and the animal food industry to take advantage of this local nutritious and cost-effective source of animal food. And whereas the animal food industry and farmers have developed best practices to address the food safety concerns associated with the use of the product, working in conjunction with our state Departments of Agriculture, Cooperative Extension Programs, and land grant universities, the systems currently in place are effectively addressing any risk as evidenced by the lack of human or animal food-borne illness associated with the use of the product. And whereas WNC Communities and the WNC Brewers Grain LLC have let us know that adding an additional layer of control and record-keeping, such as that being considered in the FDA Act, would significantly add costs that could cause farmers to choose an alternative feed source. This would leave breweries without an efficient disposal system for wet grain and force them to the undesirable alternative of using a landfill. Whereas we support our local farmers and numerous craft breweries and respectfully request that the FDA give favorable consideration to an exemption for craft breweries and farmers who feed wet grain from any new regulations. Whereas this board feels it's in the best interest of the citizens to request that the U.S. FDA help us protect the farm brewery partnership with an exemption, thereby preserving the opportunity for family farmers in the rural mountain region of North Carolina to enjoy greater income and keep their farms working and productive. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners for Buncombe County as follows: that this board officially request the FDA exempt craft breweries and the farmers who feed wet grain from any new regulations. Number two, a copy of this resolution be sent to our local representative and congressional representative. Number three, this resolution be effective upon its adoption. So basically, we don't doubt this is a well-intentioned rule. We certainly want everyone to be safe, but we do also recognize that this is a best practice when they have these spent grains that can be used for our farmers that have always been under attack and losing their land and losing their ability to farm due to cost. It also helps us in our landfill that we don't get unnecessary and potentially usable items put in our landfill, which would be a pretty likely alternative to this. So this was something that Representative Nathan Ramsey brought to my attention, and I appreciate the board agreeing to put this on without unanimous consent. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? I've read. So moved. Been a motion by Commissioner King. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Frost. Is there any further discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. Frost?
It's a good resolution, and I've been out to the Ramsey farm, and a lot of the mash or the grain that comes from the breweries that they have each day, they mix it in with their silage. This smells awesome after they get done, but it takes a lot of time to get it mixed in it. But the production of milks up, it helps in that area, you know, and they actually pay for it, you know? But this, you're talking about sending it to the dump. A lot of them would put it in the sewer system, so MSD would be, you know, have this in there. So we don't need it in sewer system, we don't need it in the dump. The cows seem to really like it, and, you know, their production of milk went up, and it takes some time for them to mix it, though. It's, you ought to go out and look at it. It's really, when they get this and it sits over in the corner, and then the silage, the way they mix it in it, it's a trip to watch, so if anybody gets an opportunity, I'm sure Nathan will show you.
He would definitely show us. Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor of the resolution as read out say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then we have adopted that resolution. We'll ask the representatives in FDA to consider that. Announcements, the nursing home community advisory committee is in need of members. We have 15 vacancies. And that, how many people are on that board, Madam Clerk? So we have 15 out of 25 that are, we need to get on there, so very important, because we have an awful lot of nursing homes in our area. The next regular meeting of the commission will be May 13, beginning at 4:30 in Room 326 at 200 College Street in downtown Asheville. Commission meetings can be seen on BC Charter Cable, Channel 192, ATT Uverse, Channel 99, live on BCTV 192, and on buncombecounty.org during the meetings, or online anytime at buncombecounty.org. Is there any other business to come before the board tonight?
Point of personal privilege.
Yes, sir.
The, a lot of the conversations tonight, thanking Mandy and others and the Community Child Protection Team, the updates on those, and even the correction officers, I just wanted to take a time, a minute, to thank our churches and our faith-based organizations for all their work, especially during this Easter season, a time of resurrection and hope, and the things that we aspire for our children, and I want the messages to go out in Buncombe County, that our departments are here to work collectively with our community and do great things for our children. I see one of the commissioners' grandchildren here in the chambers, and my mind goes to mine. And I want us to be hopeful during this time of year, and honored to serve on this board and to be able to do, and thank you guys for what y'all do, and just a good time of the year to do that, so I appreciate the privilege to do that.
Sir, any other comments or business? If not, I don't think we needed a closed session tonight, so we will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Mike, Commissioner Belcher is, and second by Vice Chair Frost. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Six oh vote. We adjourn till next month.
May 13th, huh?